The January nineteen twenty twenty one special meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'll be leading the pledge of allegiance today. Everyone, please stand. Please face your nearest flag and repeat after me. I pledge. Thank you all for being here. We have a special meeting today. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three, the public shall directly address the legislative body. Concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not any individual council member.
How many do you have?
We have a total of three.
Are these all focused on what the was prescribed in the special meeting?
They called in and they shared that they had a public comment. We didn't specify what their item was.
Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, why don't we let them speak first and then we'll go find out.
And then we'll after that, we'll kind of figure out for the future if anything needs to be modified. Go ahead, sir. Mr. Zaro?
Yes.
Sir, you have three minutes.
Um, hello, my name's Pat Zaro. I'm a resident of Hawthorne. Uh, I'm calling tonight because firstly, um, I want to say I think it's. Uh, this process for selecting the treasurer has sort of been rushed and. Seems like uh, the public is not getting as much input as they probably should since. These comments are actually happening before we get to hear from the count from the from the candidates and there's no chance for us to. Uh, speak to them or have them respond to us, which I think is problematic. Uh, I would like to know personally their stances on public banking. In October of two thousand nineteen, the state of California. Uh, passed legislation to allow public banks to be created in California. And I think that Hawthorne would benefit greatly from these kinds of institutions which help protect South Dakota. Or North Dakota, I'm sorry, from the two thousand eight recession and um, it could be an interesting source of revenue. And a good way to help our community and reinvest in our community instead of big corporate banks. Um, I once again will say, I think that it's inappropriate for us not to be allowed. To have more interaction with these candidates since this is traditionally an elected position and you have um, foregone the special election to. To allow us to actually have our voices heard. So I think you guys should make more time for us to uh. Interact with the the finalists instead of just choosing them amongst yourselves. Thank you for my uh, thank you for this time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaro. Have a good night. Next person, please.
Okay, next we have Ms. Megan Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, you have three minutes.
Pleading me council members, my name is Megan Mitchell. I don't know much about the candidates as the previous speaker mentioned. Uh, but I can say that I don't support Amy Shepherd for city treasurer her. Uh, treasurer during her campaign for city council, she was very vocal about her passion for expanding commercial as well as. Residential development within the city, also while campaigning, Miss Shepherd was open about some of the business relationships. Being a conflict of interest. I do not think it's wise for a person who is openly overzealous about development to be appointed as the city treasurer. I think that that would allow for unfettered access and influence over our elected to be servants as well as budget. I do support development of our city, of course. I think something like sixty-five percent of our residents are renters and have lived their entire lives, but I do think that that. Would be for the people who live here and not the people that gentrification would attract. So I do believe that if Miss Shepherd was the city treasurer, it would be a disservice to our community in the future of Hawthorne. Um, that's all I have to say and thank you for your time and consideration and your service.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. You have a good night.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next, we have Maggie Clark. She actually hung up. Okay, it went straight to her voicemail, so we weren't able to get a hold of her.
Can you try it again?
We've tried a couple of times already.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, sounds good.
That was it for public.
They have an opportunity. Okay. Alright, yeah. Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like Russell to comment uh, about that we have a shooting sharing responsibility to select. Or appoint somebody before February third or sixth. Uh, uh, talk about that how with the way we. We went to this process, we didn't rush, but it was mandated by this. By the law that we have to do this in such a period of time.
Uh, yes, we only have sixty days when the seat became vacant and since uh, council member Patterson was sworn in, was that December twelfth?
Yes.
Um, yeah, we have only sixty days in which to uh, to appoint a replacement. Otherwise, we have to go to a special election which, you know, could cost the city over three hundred thousand dollars. And uh, that's the reason why we picked this uh, uh. While we settled on a method for selecting the next treasurer.
Alright, thank you. I just want the public to know that that's we didn't create this uh, this that deadline, so thank you.
Alright, is there anyone else? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed, ordered. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have one item. My consent calendar for your approval. Item five, finance director requests approval of the warrants.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Uh, I think it was seconded by uh, council member Montero.
Yes.
So first before uh, Mayor Potem, alright, roll call vote, please.
Uh, council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yeah.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, okay, item number six?
Yes, clarification of procedure approved by city council on December fifteenth twenty twenty for selecting candidate to fill vacancy. And treasurer seat caused by the election of L. David Patterson to the city council.
Mr. City Attorney, I understand that the city council took things out of order on January twelfth. While we were considering the selection of the city treasurer, can you re-explain the procedure that the city council voted on December fifteenth, please?
Uh, yes, uh, you had agreed that on this special meeting of tonight, January nineteenth. That uh, you would take the opportunity to uh, acknowledge and receive the applications from the six candidates. And also, uh, at the last meeting, you had indicated that. Or there were a couple of council members that had indicated that there was no need to hear from all of the candidates. I I feel that. Some of the council members felt that uh, they had enough information in both the resume and the application. To determine who the finalist should be. And so tonight, on the nineteenth, uh, you will. Make a motion to select the finalist and then you'll have an opportunity uh, to hear from the finalist tonight. To hear an opening statement and also to ask questions of the finalist. And then on the next meeting of the twenty-sixth, you'll have an opportunity to actually make a motion to approve. Who the next city treasurer will be and also um, uh, at oral commution communications on uh, January twenty-sixth. Uh, uh, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment on what they hear tonight from the finalist. Okay?
Uh. I move to acknowledge receipt of the applications.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Uh, Russell, do we have to read all the names?
Oh, no, um, this is, this is the opportunity that uh, uh, each of you. Although you had indicated last time that uh, or at in the staff report, we had indicated that. Uh, one council member can make a motion to uh, to nominate a finalist and then we need a second to vote on it. Um, and you can go in any order that you want to, so that would be item number eight. So is there a a motion to pick uh, the first finalist for tonight?
I'm I'm moved to uh, nominate Gregory Andrew Fallon.
Well, I mean.
As a finalist.
But we already uh, okay, that's so.
Yeah, you didn't formally vote on it, though.
Uh, we're gonna move to nominate the three that we selected last. Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that.
We already. Yeah.
You can do that as well.
Uh, you can.
I would like to go. Would you like to do uh, do that, Mr. Patterson?
I was gonna ask Mayor Potem, would you like to make your motion to nominate the three that we select last week?
You could just.
Actually need to ratify her motion.
Well, okay, uh, hold on just a moment, okay? Let me just take a look at. Let's let's look at what item eight actually does say.
Approve the ratified. Ratified installation.
Let's just make uh, let's just look at that very carefully, guys. I don't want to mess this up. I have to go back to it. Alright, so. Um, so just to make sure that we just don't um, lose what we're supposed to do, um, I'm going to make a motion to. Approve as three finalists Marie Poindexter Hornbach. Gregory Fallon and Jose Tobar.
Second.
Okay, not in any specific order, by the way, okay? Just just I read them just like that as they appeared. Roll call vote, please.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member Reyes English?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Uh, yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item number nine, uh. Okay, I don't.
Yes.
I don't. Yes, item number.
This is where I would go ahead and and read that first statement.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
At this time, I would like to call Gregory Fallon for his opening statement.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, so we have three candidates and uh, all three of them are gonna have their opportunity. Go ahead. They don't appear on the screen here. Okay, they're gonna bring them in as they come, as we go, right? Okay.
A point of clarification. Are these are the candidates going to be in separate breakout rooms?
Yes.
So I'm gonna actually repeat the statement if uh, Mr. Fallon, if you want to unmute yourself. Um, at this point, I would like to call Gregory Fallon for his opening statement.
Permission to speak?
You're all set.
Right. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Greg Fallon. Uh, seen a lot of familiar faces. Um, I just wanted to kind of hit on a a few things, uh, qualifications, goals. Um, and go from there. Uh, I think I'm really qualified for the position. Um, I have a CPA license. I've been working in tax and finance since two thousand six. Um, and you know, it's working with all different types of auditors, uh, different types of finance people. And most most importantly is I understand balance sheets, uh, you know, statements and kind of how to dig into the numbers and. I think that's really useful for a city treasurer. Um, and then also, you know, I've had experience with, you know. Different types of cost accounting, not necessarily with, you know, cities and grants, but with uh, cost accounting for government contractors and stuff. But and then the second part, um, is I'm also a financial advisor. So, you know, one of the things that I know is important for the city is, you know, managing the money. Uh, within the realm of what you're allowed to do, uh, which is a challenging actual thing right now with interest rates so low. Um, but kind of having the the ability to, you know, look through different, uh, you know, options and select the best one for the city. Uh, in this in this time of, you know, low interest rates and do what we can uh, to generate some income. Um, and yeah, I'm also I'm registered with FINRA. Um, I I was with a broker dealer before and, you know, I had a series seven. I. I still have the series six. Um, and basically, I'm, you know, very well versed in investments. I mean. Again, mostly with, you know, uh, in my work experience, it's more with individuals, but um, you know, same kind of deal with, you know, looking in. The the benefits of the different interest rates and fluctuations and uh, I guess one of I go to my goals and. I think uh, I I really like the the position because it's very kind of, uh, what should I say, you know, tailored to what I do professionally. And it's to me, it's pretty straightforward is finding what's best for the city, you know, financially and then also providing, you know, reliable numbers. Uh, is like a vetting process to the council and the city at large. Um, so like, you know, I think cash flow obviously is really important for a city, so that's something to focus on and then optimizing investment. Uh, and then being able to really vet things and ask questions when when I look at stuff, you know, as far as. When when I look at financial statements, it's not necessarily like, what is all this stuff? Like, I really, you know, want to say, okay, where did this come from and look at kind of the source stuff and. And really track it down and also catch things that don't make sense is I also have a a tax practice and, you know, a lot of times I'm catching. You know, just because I've been around seeing different errors and and making sure things reconcile. Um, and then while I'm doing this, it's like, I just want to see uh, the city of Hawthorne be one of the best-run cities. Uh, in in California, you know, basically the be a part of the team, uh, people working together, uh, in the council, in the city. Uh, and basically making Hawthorne shine and be their finances are in order and they're a well-run city. Um, and that's kind of uh, what's what I'm what I find most interesting.
Thank you. Um, questions from city council at this time for Mr. Fallon?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Don't mind me. Oh, I have a question, however. Um, Mr. Fallon.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Uh, you you're saying that you uh, you're a financial advisor, um, but you're no longer with the broker dealer? Could you talk to me about that?
Yeah, I actually broke out and uh, started my own RIA, so, uh, I mean, long story short, uh. The broker dealer thing just wasn't, I thought, the best fit for the clientele I had and the different kinds of products they had. Whereas being independent, I basically, you know, had more access to, you know, different uh, products than just the broker dealer I was registered with. So, you know, pretty much, uh, I don't need the series seven anymore because I'm, you know, no longer with the broker dealer. But I do have a uh, you know, registered investment advisory. Uh, that I that's called Highland MB Wealth LLC.
You have a series sixty-five or sixty-six?
It's a sixty-six.
Um, awesome, and. You're you say you're CPA?
Yeah, in California and Massachusetts.
Awesome. Alright, that's all the questions I've written. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
The chair.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Hi there, Mr. Fallon.
Good morning, uh, good night. Good evening, sorry.
Uh, I have a couple of questions for you. One, how long have you lived in Hawthorne?
I bought my house in two thousand nine in Fusion, uh, and I did take off two years right after I got married from uh, fourteen and. Fifteen, uh, and we basically were traveling around, but ever since then, especially my daughter's was born sixteen. So I've been there absolutely, uh, in in the Fusion, living there since uh, January uh. First in two thousand sixteen, when we got back.
Um, with regards to the businesses that you mentioned, you said you own your own um, private business. Uh, you also have a tax practice. Do you see or foresee any uh, conflicts with regards to the position you're asking to be appointed to versus. What you currently do for uh, outside um, income?
No, I don't. Um, yeah, I have a tax practice and like we talked about, uh, you know, the RIA that I have. Um, but again, yeah, as long I'm not managing like, well, uh, basically, I don't see any kind of conflicts with. With this, you know, the city or in the city.
So there wouldn't be, say, for instance, some businesses or groups or organizations that you work for? That uh, you have interests with and uh, any type of colluding or things like that that would interfere in the line of work of your appointment as treasurer?
No, I don't.
Is this like individuals or if you could give me an idea of the kind of businesses you work with?
Uh, sure, it's actually mostly people uh, overseas, uh, in Hong Kong, uh, that are expats that live overseas. Um, I do have a few, um, you know. Uh, people that are that I do individual tax for in Hawthorne that, you know, we're referred to like through the church or something, but. I don't do any uh, big businesses in 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 Hawthorne or for tax purposes or anything like that or have any kind of connection really. Uh, to, you know, businesses in Hawthorne, if that's what you're worried about. Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, uh, I don't. There's nothing I could see why I would have any conflicts uh, in the city because I don't I don't have any business. You know, clients like you're saying, uh, as far as is is in Hawthorne, uh, but. It's good that you're bringing it up because maybe I'm blinded by some kind of conflict. I don't know, but I don't see it.
Yeah, and you don't do any taxes or anything for elected officials here on this body or for any employee here in the city of Hawthorne, do you?
Uh, no, ma'am. I don't uh, do any, no, I don't.
Okay, and you said you're good, you 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 pretty much do investments, so you would know, say, for instance, um. On how to make pretty much uh, investments on behalf of the city and how to turn uh, ultimately successful income revenue streams for the city?
Yeah, well, that's part, that's kind of the problem right now is the interest rates are so low and Hawthorne, you know. With the money that it has to invest, it's restricted, you know, to to a certain degree. Uh, but that's something that I would, you know, love to help out with and investigate, you know, how to optimize, you know, the different investments. Because uh, I I think that is a challenge, not just for Hawthorne, but, you know. People that are elderly and saving and then also other cities where you have this, you're only allowed to invest in these certain things and right now the dollar. Is dropping and interest rates are super low. Um, so I do think, uh, you know, I could help out with that, you know, as much as possible, at least in selecting. Uh, the best of the group when you're when you're buying different different things and working with the finance, uh, you know, department to help select those because. Yeah, it's it's also about uh, working with uh, you know, the the advisors and every the the finance department there at Hawthorne to really pick out the best one.
And how and how would you um, how would you refer it over? Who told you about the appointment? And what made you interested in applying?
Just uh, well, I just wanted to, you know, be a part of the, see this place run real well and I think it's been getting better ever since I moved here. Um, you know, and even seeing your everyone's faces uh, right here, it's pretty impressive, uh, you know, considering uh, you know, just. From the past and all the stuff that was uh, you know, happening when I when I think uh, Mayor Guedi was was running. And then seeing you guys and even seeing how you guys interact with each other, uh, seems way more civil and and professional. So, uh, that was kind of motive.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Fall, um, thank you for for applying, right? Because we need people to get involved uh, in the community, so thank you for your interest. Um. Can you give us, for example, some um, example on the high-risk and low-risk investment on the short term and long term? Based on your knowledge of of any portfolio that you have?
Let me just skip, oh, sorry, my screen just, um, so give me you. Uh, you pick out different investments or um.
Yeah, give us some idea that, uh, you know, for example, i- if I would give you thirty million dollar, what you would advise to me?
Oh, for you? Yeah, thirty-one million.
Or say to this to a city, you know?
City? Well, unlike like I was saying before, I mean, the city is really limited in what kind of assets they can buy because they're restricted. So it, yes, what I more do is is I'm trying to maximize the value, you know, for investments is totally different, but being treasurer. You know, you're 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 basically, you know, shut into certain types of fixed income. Um, but I think that's something that the city should look at if possible is maybe, you know, changing that those. Looking at those policies in this this kind of weird time where interest rates are so low. Uh, because the thing about things that are not risky is they are actually risky because the value of the dollar drops, so. You know, that's why this, you know, the market's kind of going up, uh, so you could think, oh, I'm gonna buy this 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 CD or, you know, this is totally safe. But the value of the dollar, you know, could drop and you're you're losing actual real value over time, so that's kind of uh. I don't know if that answered your question, uh, but that th- that makes it more complicated because the the standard answer would be like, oh, this is low risk because it's, you know, a treasury. You know, that's it. It's low risk, but it's not really low risk. They're gonna just keep printing out a bunch of money and then the value of the dollar is gonna go down. So you gotta just be mindful of it all, but the the one thing that makes being treasury easy is that you guys have an investment plan and there's only, you know, a select amount of. Uh, kind of leeway, uh, as far as what you could select. Um, so that's why I feel comfortable, you know, with with managing this is, you know, one. You guys kind of have to follow pretty somewhat strict, um, you know. Investment plans, but I would, you know, be open to looking at any way to maximize, you know, the city's, the city's investments.
Okay, uh, my next question is, what is your philosophy on uh, raising tax?
Philosophy on raising taxes? Um, well. Well, I. I guess, uh, I, you know, raising taxes, uh, if the money is well-spent, makes sense, uh, but. Uh, I do think there's a lot of waste, like I just heard the EDD gave away nine billion dollars in fraudulent claims. And I mean, don't get me wrong, I mean, I I do taxes and some of the plans that have been coming out and the way that money's been, you know, just spewing out for these different programs is quite amazing. Uh, but yeah, I think there's a checks and balance. I don't believe in zero tax. I'm not a, you know, never pay any tax. I think there's fair and reasonable, you know, taxes, uh, but I think what makes it unfair is, you know, there's different. Special tax rules where people get different advantages in this and what happens is they start out small when the the Congress passes them. And then with over time, it it kind of grows and then the disparity becomes, you know, larger and larger. I mean, even if you look at something like, you know, this is a hot topic, but uh, luckily, you know, it's Prop thirteen. I mean, that's kind of an unusual thing. Do I think it's fair that somebody, you know, has their their properties on the strand and a trust and they pay hardly anything in property tax? You know, because of the way it was set up versus the other people that just, you know, move there and then, I mean, so I I don't know, taxes are complex. Um, and I try to just, you know, as a professional, obviously, I minimize taxes and, you know, legally possible for my clients. That's my goal. Uh, you know, that's what they pay me to do. Um, but I will say I don't appreciate all the tax law changes, uh, and the fluctuations and the new rules. It's been kind of hectic, uh, you know, the tax Trump changes and now we're probably, you know, putting in work. I just, you know, I believe in a a fair tax system and I think if you just kind of look at things, you can tell that some things are not not fair. And it's not so much the tax rate, it's about how you're calculating, you know, the tax on what income and and different things because. Um, you know, the rate is the simple part, but figuring out what's income and and how people do different. You know, uh, things to avoid realization, um, is kind of where it is. Uh, but I mean, I could talk for hours about tax policy, um, but yeah, I mean, the a lot of times it's like the tax rate, but then it's like, oh, the tax rate is this, but they take all these crazy deductions and credits. So their tax rate is, you know, lower, so it's not just as simple as like higher taxes, lower taxes. Um, but it's a can of worms, but no, I think fair tax, that's a good answer, I think, you know, just everyone should pay, you know, something. Um, you know, to 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 do, but the only the only thing I I I don't like super-high taxes is because. It just, people can go other places, so uh, basically it drives people out, um, and. And that's not good, so when it's really lopsided, we're all the and then also if those people leave, then the money dries up, so I don't know about um, using it as a way to balance out.
So let me ask you, let me ask you this follow-up question because uh. The city of Hawthorne in the past, recent past have put some uh, uh, tax increase on the on the on the ballot. What was your, I don't want to say what I what I how did you vote, but what was your feeling about?
Um, about, well, I don't think the treasurer, luckily, I don't need to do tax policy, you know, that's what I love about this job. I'm just sticking right to the uh, you know, maximizing the investments and stuff, but no, I think it's it it it. It could be warranted, you know, depending on, uh, I mean, I did vote for it, you know, remember the school tax that they had, uh, the to build the new high school. Um, that we we pay, um, but uh, as far as the. I think it's fine because I mean, the thing I like about the sales tax too is it's people come into Costco, they buy a bunch of stuff and they're, you know. They could not even live in Hawthorne and that place is always packed, so uh, the city needs to do what it needs to do and you're right, you know, as far as, you know, cash flow management. Um, you really, I don't feel like I'm necessarily in the know about all the stuff. But sometimes there there is call for the city to make, you know, certain increases if they need to for certain things, uh, you know, the benefit versus the cost. Uh, like in that tax, I mean, do people that. that come into, you know, Hawthorne to buy stuff, I mean, they're not even gonna notice it, uh but it could be, you know, really material for the city, so.
Okay, that's good, that's good, so let me ask you the next, this is my final question. Uh, what is your um availability, because you know, being a a a public official, you know, it's not just to come for the meeting twice a month, but is to be out there in the community on different events, now, you know, we got COVID, but eventually COVID will go away. But there is a a public event that uh we are, I'm not saying mandate, but we should be there to represent the city. So what is your availability, like say after hours or on the weekends, what what, how does it?
Um, yeah, I'm available to to go out to things, I mean, I do, you know, have a family and two daughters uh too. Uh, but uh, you know, that's, you know, kind of uh as far as time allotted, you know, I kind of looked over, you know, the needs uh for being uh the treasurer, but I do want to get involved, I I like working with these numbers and investment stuff. Uh, so, you know, i- i- I would get, you know, not necessarily going out to public events, but putting in time at the city, you know, going over the numbers, is what I'm more interested in than necessarily the public events, but um, I would definitely go to represent, you know, the city if that makes sense. But yeah, that's what I, you know, kind of like about this position is, um, you know, it's more uh, I can, you know, look at the, go into the city finances and do work uh more so than necessarily going out in public, but I would, I would definitely join you for some some public events or 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 different things to to promote the city.
Uh, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Fallon. Um uh, fro- from time to time, there will be bills coming from the state legislature involving revenue and taxation policy. Are you willing to uh keep an eye on what's coming out of Sacramento? And giving us any advice as to whether we should whether we should approve it, or whether we should uh perhaps write a letter o- opposing it? Uh, if it's something that would be uh involving revenue and taxation policy, and it would maybe something that would either be beneficial for us or detrimental to us as a city?
What's your current process for those types of things?
Well, usually it it goes through the, usually whatever, whatever the, you know, these kinds of things are uh recommended by city council members and by the uh and sometimes by the um and and put on the calendar, perhaps by the city attorney's office. But it's more or less ad hoc, we don't have a special procedure for doing it. I just wondered if, when it comes to revenue and taxation policy, none of us are really experts, um other than uh Councilmember Patterson as far as finance. So it, I'm just wondering if you would be willing to do that, to look at what is coming from Sacramento and perhaps giving us an idea of what would be uh beneficial if we if we approved it, or if we, or whether we should oppose it.
Yeah, I would, I would look into that, um, you know, and I mean, how many of these are are coming out every every uh month or we talk?
When it comes to revenue and taxation policy, it's not that much. Uh, it it it, this is the time of year when it comes out though, because uh the the legislature is 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 beginning its session, and there will be a lot of bills coming out. Not necessarily revenue and taxation policy, we we're getting a lot of housing bills, but there'll be some revenue and taxation policy. Uh, okay, bills.
But it's not, it's is it the vote that, you don't really vote on it, it's more like your opinion, the city's?
That's correct, we're not voting on, we're just, we're just looking at it to see if it benefits our city.
Yeah, I don't, I would love, you know, to put some, you know, input into that for, to help you with with the recommendations, and then right now, you're just saying you guys kind of look at it and make a recommendation, but don't feel like you have anybody that's an expert, really understanding it sort of thing?
Right, we don't, we don't, well, we we don't have a procedure for um, for uh approving or for for uh for rejecting that ki- those kinds of bills, all I'm saying is, would you be willing to look at what, you know, what's coming out of Sacramento? And seeing if there's something you would especially recommend, especially as it relates to the policies that you are going to recommend that we follow in as far as investments are concerned, if you see something coming out that would be detrimental to us, would you be willing to look at it and say, this is something that I've looked at it, and perhaps you should oppose it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fallon, thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Go ahead for the next candidate.
Hey, I would like to call um Marie Hornbeck for her opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. Allow me to introduce myself, my name is Marie Hornbeck. I'm a single mother of two kids. Uh, my son Jalen is a freshman at the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, my daughter is a tenth grader at the Benji Science High School. I too am also further in my education right now at Los Angeles Pacific University. And I just wanted to say, if I'm appointed, I bring with me thirty years of professional experience, you know, in accounting, tax preparation, finance consulting, and investment. I have been involved in my community through various efforts and many organizations. My tax and planning business has allowed me to work with executives from, you know, major companies. My investment experience, um, it goes with working at Tiger Federal Credit Union at one time as the Vice President of Accounting. I helped manage our uh investment and mortgage portfolios. Um, and I just wanted to say, I'll work hard to ensure that the city's finances are safe, while, you know, just making sure that you know, we maximize any future investment opportunities. My goal is to promote a balanced and thriving economy. You know, and I I've managed to also notice that the city is really conservative in its investments, you know, with with regard to the bonds and the CDs. And I think at this time, you know, with regard to everything that's going on pandemic wise and financially, you know, that it's it's true and it's way to be conservative with the investments, but you know, I also know that, you know, I'm willing to, of course, work with David Patterson, he's the outgoing treasurer, you know, to make sure that things are are going along smoothly, you know, and I bring with me an unbiased opinion and an open mind. And I honestly look forward to working with and supporting the many of you in city council and in the city of Hawthorne. Um, I've been in Hawthorne for many years and, you know, many of you I've seen at a lot of the events. Um, you guys have come out in support over at Holly Park, so I'm always thankful for that. You know, and over at Simran as well, Simran Elementary over there in Hawthorne, so, you know, it's nice and I no matter what it takes, you know, I'm always willing to work within the community, I've done it for many, many years. And I just want to say, I really thank you from the bottom of my heart for even being a finalist, and I thank you for the opportunity. So I'm just looking forward to, you know, making sure Hawthorne is strong financially and seeing what we can do in the future to help promote um any future investments and keep things going.
Thank you, Ms. Hornbeck, uh questions from city council at this time for Ms. Hornbeck?
Who's the first person?
The chair.
Yes, go ahead, council member.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hornbeck, for taking the time to come out. Um, just a couple of questions similar to the other um applicant. Uh, you said that you've lived in the Hawthorne for how long now?
Um, ten years.
And you mentioned that you do um income taxes and you've done um uh a little bit of work, uh financial work, but nothing uh of conflict from, say for instance, from anyone here on the council, the city, or any entities that you feel would be in conflict with regards to the position of city treasurer?
No, not at all.
Um, what what uh what other experience do you have, for instance, um with regards to uh making a revenue stream or hel- helping in making um uh money for the city of Hawthorne through investments and bonds and things like this, and also in finishing, uh, how did you hear about the appointment?
Um, I heard, actually heard about the appointment, I I was aware that um Councilman uh Patterson was outgoing, but I actually received an email from the city, because I subscribe to the city's email. And it was an email uh and with regard to applying for the open appointment.
And you would be familiar with investments and how to make money for the city?
Yes, yes, I am, um, like I said, I'm working at Tiger Federal Credit Union, that was one of my uh responsibilities, you know, looking at the investment portfolio.
Uh, you're dropping out, miss?
Yeah, oh, am I? I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you could repeat that, you're?
I said, um, with regard to, you know, investments, like I said, I've I've had familiar experience working over at Tiger Federal Credit Union, I uh used to work for a nonprofit as well as the Director of Finance. And I'm very familiar with like state and government contracts and managing that, um, you know.
Yeah, can't hear you.
I'm in and out.
I'm only in and out, I'm so sorry. Internet, I'm sorry, but uh with regard to what I was saying, I am somewhat familiar, yes.
Your availability, um, there was a question earlier, and I think that's very important too. Um, and then your um ability to um think outside the box and take the initiative to bring to the council um, things of importance, what what do you feel are important uh for the city council to know that maybe we don't know otherwise, um, that is um, city treasure driven?
Um, you know, I think there are a lot of ways, and I'm not afraid to be able to bring that to the table. Um, I think there are a lot of things going on in the cities around us, um, that we can maximize over in Hawthorne as well. You know, and utilize, you know, where the economy around us is going. So I think there are many opportunities, you know, with Hawthorne Hawthorne to kind of, you know, work in conjunction with, or just, you know, maximize what's going on around us. Um, I think we could actually benefit from that in the future.
Okay, can you, could you name an opportunity? Can you provide like a, an example?
I just think, um, like for instance, um, Inglewood is close to us, and I think that with regard to, you know, the reconstruction or to construct the stadium, you know, there are things that even in Hawthorne, we could max, we could utilize that. Um, you know, with the way that economy is gonna grow, they aren't gonna be able to take on or handle all of that. So I think there's an opportunity for Hawthorne to grab some of that and, you know, pull, pull it in.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, council member.
Oh, hi, uh, Ms. Hornbeck. Thank you for applying, I appreciate your interest. Uh, follow up the question about uh at the Tigers uh Federal Credit Union, how big was your portfolio for investment?
Our portfolio investments were uh pretty mild, unfortunately while I was there. That was at the time the housing market was crashing, so uh we were selling awful lot of things. And uh actually, they ended up being bought out by Xcede at the time uh following that, so um if I had to say, our uh investment portfolio portfolio was kind of small, it was probably two to three million. It was very light towards the time that I was there, so.
Okay, so uh look at your resume. There is like a a gap in in almost in five years uh of employment.
You know what, because I actually also am employed with Wiesberge Unified School District at the moment as well. So uh I've been with them also for the last six years. Um, I work special education with uh au- autistic youth, so, yeah. So it's not a true gap, I just only had the relevant uh experience on the resume.
So not doing finance, but just almost like a special teacher?
Yes, yes.
And and then when they look at um your your history, uh it seems like uh in the past, you only worked about two years in this financial institution, can you tell me why?
Uh, Tiger ended up being sold to Xcede.
Alright, so um, so precisely, you know, that um your interest in 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 the finance and also what is your interest in the community overall? Are you, you know, available to go to events and stuff like that?
Um, I'm always more than uh willing to go to events, I have seen, I've always been at events, I've seen uh I've seen Patterson, uh Mayor Vargas. Um, so, and I always try to attend all the events in Hawthorne when they're over at City Hall. Um, so I actually always attend community events, um, because, you know, I like being out there and I uh work with a lot of youth in the community as well, you know, doing things and whatnot, so, yeah, I have no problems, I'm always helping out.
And my last question is, is is your philosophy about cities raising taxes sometime to balance out budget?
Raising taxes, I think, you know, it's easy to say raise taxes, but I think, you know, it differentiates from city to city, and I think it's something where you have to look at the whole picture. And if it will balance or benefit or hurt, you know, and if you look at the various, you know, income levels within the city, you know, you don't wanna raise taxes too high and drive everyone out. But you know, in realizing that, yes, taxes help pay for, you know, or fund the city in different ways, so I think that's one of those areas where you have to examine, you know, the bigger picture, you know, um and weigh those options and just making sure, you know, like, if, you know, raising is gonna, like I said, benefit or hurt or in what ways can we do it, in what areas can can taxes be raised? And I'm sure within the city, you know, finance, there are, you know, many different ways or departments and whatnot, but I think with regard to currently, with everything that's going on, you know, pandemic wise and financially, I think, you know, all those different you know, outside factors play a role, and that we have, we would have to examine very carefully right now.
Thank you. Alright, I'll through the chair, I have a, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Um, could you tell me a little bit about your community services? I saw you mentioned a number of things, um, on your application.
Um, yeah, so like I said, I've worked uh with Holly Park Little League, uh, you know, uh volunteered with uh, you know, like Friends of Zeta, uh I believe I have. But that's an organization, and I provide a free income tax service throughout the community, if anyone needs it through certain organizations, you know. My kids uh went to Simran Elementary over in Hawthorne, I still to this day help Simran Elementary. Um, you know, they're one of the many, you know, the only school in Hawthorne that's actually LA Unified. So I'm always donating or looking for donations um out in the community, just just trying to, you know, do whatever I can for the kids in the community as well. Um, I've done many fundraisers uh at different levels for different organizations. Um, my life, my heart is in Hawthorne. And I, you know, know all the, you know, all the kids, and I work Wiesberge, so that's also Hawthorne. Um, which is, you know, they're, believe me, they're two completely diverse areas, but you know, Hawthorne is Hawthorne, big or small, whatever you wanna call it, but I am never afraid to help out in my my community.
Thank you. Alright, okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Ms. Hornbeck, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Um, you mentioned in your resume at Tiger Federal Credit Union that you had um experience in investments, can you tell us about that, please?
Um, you know, the bank would, a lot of their money was invested in mortgages, of course. Um, they had very minimal uh investments, like as far as property is concerned. A lot of it was, you know, CDs, uh, a lot of CDs, actually, um with regard to investments, you know, and making sure, you know, the interest rates and making sure the money was invested properly and it Um, with regard to investments, you know, and making sure, you know, the interest rates and making sure the money was invested properly and it were getting a return. Um, banks often bank with other banks to, you know, get better money on the dollar. So that was pretty much my experience with that.
Yeah, uh, my, another question I have uh concerning public policy. We sometimes get bills coming from Sacramento in which um, there are positions taken in those bills on revenue and taxation policy. Sometimes the um, sometimes the bills that come down are favorable to cities and sometimes they're not favorable. Would you be willing to look at those bills and be able to tell us if something comes in that is not favorable? You would be able to make a recommendation?
Almost definitely, I'm like not afraid to even, you know, go to Sacramento and make those contacts with the people to get necessary information because, and, you know, I've done grant contracts and grant writing. So I know that a lot of things come out on paper, you know, but I was never one to be afraid to, you know, go to Sacramento and talk to the person or the people, you know, responsible for writing said papers and, you know, laws or bringing things out, you know, in that context, you know. You wanna get to the root of it and you wanna make sure you understand it, you know. And you make sure, you know, whether or not you can weigh out, you know, the differences. And making sure that, you know, whether it is a good thing or a bad thing or if it's something that you wanna be, you know, invested in. So I'm never afraid of going above and beyond that, you know, to figure something out or to learn more. That way that I can come back and, you know, make sure that the council is well informed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Hornbeck. Uh, we appreciate you being here. Have a great evening.
You, you too as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hornbeck.
Thank you.
I would like uh to call Jose Tobar for his opening statement.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Hello, do you have a, do you have audio, do you have a visual, sir?
Okay, uh, I guess you can hear. Hello, uh, everyone.
Mr. Tobar.
Hello.
Um, the other two candidates had both the audio and the visual. Do you have a camera that you can turn on for us? There we go, yeah. Uh, thank you, sir.
I was covering the screen, I didn't see.
Well, you know, you gotta, you gotta tie too, so we wanna make sure that you see the full impact of what you wanna tell us, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, hello, everyone, uh, my name is Jose Tobar. Um, I'm a resident Hawthorne uh since two thousand four. Um, I'm a father of two boys, uh ages fourteen and twelve, and a fortunate husband of a school teacher. Um, I'm a trained uh professional in accounting and finance. Um, and I have dedicated my last twenty-two years working with numbers in the private sector. As more specific in um home uh building or uh home builder development. And as far as credentials, uh I completed uh a double major uh C sign in two thousand four and passed California CPA exam in two thousand six. And currently hold a um California real estate brokerage license. Um, I'm here today before you uh because Danny Juarez reached out to me and in- encouraged me to apply um for the treasurer position. Um, I have no political ambitions whatsoever, but I would love to serve the city uh in a managerial position, a specific uh in the treasurer uh role. Um, if in your opinion, I'm uh judged to be capable uh and fit for the treasurer position. Um, it would be a great honor to work with you all in improving our community for our families and friends if I'm selected for this role.
Thank you, Mr. Tobar.
Yes.
Um, questions from city council at this time for Mr. Tobar? Uh, through the chair. Yes, go ahead, questions. Uh, Mr. Tobar, um, I've seriously got two questions. Do you have uh any investment experience outside of real estate?
Outside of real estate, um, no, it will be on, only my personal finances. I manage all uh the family savings. Um, but no, I, I will not be claiming to have a big uh investment. Um, I mean, I, I know the products out there and I know what strategy will pay better, but as we all know in the governmental um environment, uh most entities are tied to what they can do. So I, I'm aware of that and I, I believe it's uh as much as you want to be uh creative, uh it's very difficult because of the many regulations in place. And the many people who have tried to be uh very creative and not being in trouble because yeah, they break the rules, so.
Uh, my other question is, um, uh, could you tell me a little bit about your community service, community service experience? Uh, or, you know, have you been involved in any organizations within the city of Hawthorne?
Yes, um, here in Hawthorne, my main uh involvement has been uh the AYSO because I have two boys and started uh to play soccer with the boys, then I started uh getting involved with um, the people that run the organization, nobody gets get uh paid there. Uh, I have dedicated thousands of dollars uh in uh either coaching, uh refereeing, uh uh helping the board, so, yeah. And, and then I have helped a lot of other uh nonprofit organizations, mainly uh in the accounting uh and finance areas. Uh, I helped them set up from the beginning and then make sure that they keep their status alive. Um, that they don't get in trouble. So I have plenty, I mean, I have a, a big list of mainly churches and some foundations that I uh have helped.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Mr. Tobar, thank you for taking the time. Um, with regards to some of the remarks you made, you mentioned that you've lived in Hawthorne since two thousand and four. You mentioned you have a family, two boys. Um, you also made mention that you have a private sector that you've worked with. Have you, have you ever worked with any entities from the city of Hawthorne, the city council, or anybody in the city with regards to uh tax preparations or any contracts or anything like this?
No, nothing.
You mentioned you have a real estate broker's license. Are you familiar with um, say, real property? Uh, maybe property that the city owns, that city has, how to maybe make revenue for the city? How to do investments for the city? Can you talk a little bit on that?
I, I would lie if I tell you that I know uh what the city owns and how I will recommend to uh make better use of it. I, I'm not aware of it then, so if you will give me a list and say like, this is what uh we have, then I will uh sure give you ideas, but I will not jump into conclusions without knowing anything uh about the city.
Sure, those are just hypotheticals, but just for an opportunity for you to speak on your experience. So I'm kinda trying to leave it open for you to give us some history on some things and knowledge of investments. Say, for instance, uh forecasting for the future, a city such as ours looking for revenue sources through bonds and things like this. But moreover, uh investments to where we could um double our money here in the city, things like this, especially as a CPA that you are. Just leaving that for you to, to give remarks on things that you think that you have the uh know-how and the ability to do in helping the city fiscally, um, you know, longevity to prosper.
Yes, uh, I do have the knowledge and the background on uh investing in properties, uh investing uh monies. Um, and more specific, uh before you go there, uh you gotta manage your budget. Uh, so in order to manage your revenues, to forecast, uh the budgets basically is forecast in your future and making sure that you don't go over it or that you're trying to save some money uh to invest later. So it's all uh play into a uh well uh thought strategy. But no, I, I can't go into hypothetical uh ideas about um, investing and making uh revenue for the city without knowing anything in specific.
But you do know how to make investments.
Y- yes, I do.
Okay, so everybody would have to see it, obviously, to, to dictate whether or not, what's the best way to move forward on an investment, right?
Right.
So the reason I ask this is because, as you know, uh council member Patterson was city treasurer for a number of years and he's been successful in helping the city uh make dollars and through investments and things like this and being very hands-on. So the, the question is basically, how hands-on would you be? And how um, how would you use your expertise to, to uh show us that? In other words, uh your time and dedication, which is also very important.
Yeah, well, if selected, I will take the responsibility seriously and do the best uh I can for um, the people that I work, which will be the city, city council and, and the mayor and the community a- at the end, because everything has to be reported back to uh the city.
Okay. You, you talk on your resume a little bit about implementing, um, implementing uh uh accounting controls and standards. What can you just elaborate a little bit on how you would implement uh accounting controls and standards?
Yes, so specifically uh when there is uh cash involved, you gotta have standards, you have to have separation between these. Uh, and sometimes uh that creates uh what could be seen to other people waste because you gotta have different uh um personnel in, in different roles so that to make sure that uh monies are not being misused. Uh, and when it is into uh, it's in the public's money, it's even more uh important to have this type of uh accounting standards and principles in place. But that all ties back to uh who is in, uh at the end in charge and um, that the master put in place. So, because I, I could be telling, if I was selected, I could be telling you like, we gotta do distance, but if, if you guys will override me, then it doesn't work, so.
So you would be taking charge and taking responsibility should anything go awry?
Yes, and I will tell you that I'm a uh, a team player. I'm a very stable person. I'm not the one that will be like uh saying crazy things about anybody. But I will tell you in person, uh face to face, when I don't like things, that when I see that things are not the way they should be. And if you do it once, I will let it go. If you do it twice, I will remind you three times, I'm gone. I'm telling you like, sorry. This is not me, because I'm a very ethical person and I, I have been trained to uh do the best as possible uh to maintain confidence in the people that uh rely on your work.
Okay.
In this case, my, my, my position is treasurer. So if anything I will add, um, to the team, it will be that you will get somebody who's a team player, somebody who brings credibility and people will trust because um they know that what I say is what I do. So I'm not the one that will be talking all kind of stuff that doesn't make sense and then just to cover up. So I only say what is necessary and what is possible.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Tobar, thank you for coming in. Um, on your resume, you say that you uh passed the CPA examination in two thousand six. Have you worked as a CPA?
No, I have not uh worked as a CPA because um I have worked for this uh private company, uh the name is Party Hounds, it's listed there. And every time um I was stepping out of the door that I wanted to leave, uh they promoted me again. So in order to retain me, so, and working for them, there is no need uh to have a CPA. And in order for me to claim that I'm a CPA, I had to uh work a full year under a licensed CPA so that I can be signed off, that's it. But I, I know what, what the, I do basically what a CPA will do, but I cannot claim that I'm a CPA because that's illegal.
Okay, so you're not licensed as a CPA?
I'm not licensed, no.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Tobar, for coming in and thank you for applying. Uh, my respect for you to be interesting in our community, so thank you. Um, the question, you told uh Mr. Patterson that you never had any other investment outside of the real estate uh companies, right?
Uh, I'm not sure what you mean, uh, I.
No, uh, because, because uh the question was, uh, did you have any other investment or portfolio that it was not real estate? Right? Because you've been at, at this real estate company for, since nineteen ninety-nine?
That's correct. Yeah, so my main uh uh experience has been in uh home building.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and the home building uh requires uh investing in land first. That's the, the main commodity of the business and then developing that land. Uh, and finally selling the finished uh product, which is the home.
So, so, but, but when we're talking about, for example, uh like a city, uh, uh, you know, we're trying to invest our money in a short term and long term, the basis was to get the return. Uh, when you're talking about investment in, in, in land and, and, and properties, it's kinda like a different different things, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a very uh unique uh environment in, in real estate, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So let, uh, help me understand uh your resume, because you put like your parade is homes from nineteen ninety-nine to present. So, and then you put Director of Finance twenty sixteen to present, but in the same company?
Yes.
Okay, so all, all these uh two thousand seven to June two thousand thing, you were finance planner, finance director in the same place?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, alright. Um, so if, 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 um, if we would ask about relationship right now with the, with the stock market, the market's going on, we know about the bonds, the yield, the yield, the dollar uh uh going up, you know, to affect all type of investment, do you know how to approach that?
Of course, I told you that I do invest my own savings and I'm very knowledgeable. I follow the stock market, I follow a bunch of portfolios. But that's not in a uh, what you would call a professional uh role, that's my own private life that I do. Yeah, but I'm really uh aware and, and knowledgeable that I'm managing my own money, so.
And what is your philosophy about the cities raising taxes to, to manage our cash flow?
You know, it is unpopular, right? So, uh.
Unpopular sometimes, you know, we have to make decisions.
Yes, so of course, if you're i- in, in charge, you gotta uh make it work out, so my uh philosophy is that there has to be a balance. Uh, you can't uh go long-term postponement plans and then um they will become uh a bigger problem. So, but you can't also go like all the way out raising taxes, because that, then that will be a big problem, especially for the uh individuals that are uh politically elected, in this case, you guys. So there has to be a balance, that's, that's my uh philosophy.
Okay, so the last question is, your three-point group have any type of investments in this area, South Bay?
No, the last thing that they did uh was uh No, the last thing that they did uh was uh two thousand. I can't remember, two thousand uh eight, two thousand, the condominiums on uh. Uh, next to Aviation in El Segundo.
The three sixty?
Uh, it's not the three.
Or the fusion?
I forgot the name, but it's the the property in the corner of uh, uh, yeah, El Segundo in uh Aviation, or Isis, actually, yeah. That's the, that's a long time ago. They don't have any uh businesses here.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. Thank you so much, Mr. Tobar. Thank you for being here with us. Oh, actually, I have a question for you, Mr. Tobar.
Yes.
Um. So you say the community involvement, you were involved with A Y S O?
Yes.
And uh, so how long has your, how long have you been involved with A Y S O?
Um, I've been involved since two thousand twelve, but uh more. Into the more and all the activities uh in the management since about two thousand sixteen and a half.
Alright, so you've been involved with their management?
Yeah.
Um, with some of the, some of their accounting as well, or? Have you practiced that with the, with the, that nonprofit organization?
I I have knowledge. I actually set up uh now that you asked that, uh, I have knowledge and setting up the books for uh. Um, nonprofits uh using quit books. Um, but no, I have not touched the uh finances of the A Y S O hidden pattern.
Okay.
I I've been asking that I uh want to become their auditor or their treasurer as the. Um, position opens up. Bec- and and the the one, the main reason is that um, not that I want to do it. But the people around uh. Keep asking uh questions and. I go like, we really need somebody who has the credibility and uh respect of the uh community. And I I know that I have that from uh the way everybody treats me. So that is the main reason that I um. Will be involved in this type of uh roles. I I it's not uh. An easy one because people still at the end complain, but somebody has to pay the price.
I understand. Is uh, is former Mayor Danny Juarez still part of the management um in in the A Y S O system?
He is uh playing a role in helping uh. Collect, uh, not collect, uh, do the fundraising. That's his main role.
Fundraising, okay.
Yeah, he he's, he doesn't play uh any uh roles in decision-making. His role is mainly helping fundraising.
Okay.
And I, and and I'm not really close friends with him. He just seen my interactions there. And I know who he is and he he goes like, oh, you can do this, or say you're the right guy. I don't know, that's, so.
Alright.
Yeah.
I really appreciate you being here, sir. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to continue the selection of the treasurer to the regular meeting of January twenty-sixth. Twenty twenty-one pursuant to procedure approved by the city council.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English? Oh, you're muted, miss.
Uh, Councilmember Angie Reyes?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Okay, um, yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Anything further? If not?
Alright, go through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, would the council like the finalists to come back? Uh, to answer follow-up questions for the next agenda, uh because if you do, I would place that on the agenda.
Yes, I, to the chair.
Anybody opposed to that?
Hold on, to the chair, Miss, Miss English.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, thanks. Yes, I do, um, yes, Russ, I do believe that uh we should have a a second round. Um, and then um go from there.
Okay, I'll put that on the agenda.
But is anybody, is everybody in agreement, or is there, are there certain, are there people who are opposed? Uh, that's not a concurrent.
Through the chair, they should be available uh if we need them.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that it's on the agenda so that they can speak, okay?
Um, I I, I just wanted to say, I don't. I don't think we should have a second round. I think they should be available in case we need to ask questions. I don't think a second round is necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody? Just wanna make sure we're all good to go. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.